I don't think we meant to leave it there.
I don't think so.
Okay. Microphone 10, 10th microphone, testing.
Hold the roll please.
Ms. Cloughville?
Here.
Ms. Nyberg?
Here.
Dr. Ridge?
Here.
Ms. Jester?
Here.
Ms. Edward?
Here.
Item 3, consideration action to authorize Superintendent Deegan to suspend school district-wide and take other necessary actions if teachers endure support personnel engaged in a work stoppage and Superintendent Deegan determines that student safety is endangered by the lack of adequate staff to provide supervision of students.
With the Board President's permission, would the Board President go ahead and read all four of them?
Okay.
And then may I...
Address them?
Address the group. And then, of course, the Board would need to act individually on each one.
Okay. Item 4, consideration action to authorize Superintendent Deegan to determine whether during any employee work stoppage, the district has the staff available to continue extracurricular, co-curricular, and other after or before-school programs and to make decisions regarding those activities accordingly. Item 5, consideration and action to authorize Superintendent Deegan to take steps necessary to permit 12-month support employees who would be unable to make up the loss of work days occurring because of a school closure if due to a teacher work stoppage, to elect one of the following options: number 1, assignment of work during any closure to avoid the loss of pay for any day or days of absence; 2, to take a day of accrued leave except that employees cannot take sick leave for this purpose; or 3, to choose a day or days of leave without pay. And item 6 is consideration action regarding the authorization for feeding sites during any potential work stoppage. Okay, Dr. Deegan?
Thank you, Ms. Jester. We have a lot of people, and I appreciate y'all coming. I hope you're not missing your lunch. I don't have pizza for you available, principals. And I want to take a moment to outline the steps that the Board and Administration have taken to this point. The items on this agenda are outlining that the only possible way for the district, including myself, to make these decisions is with Board authorization. These decisions are beyond any of our scope as individuals in the district. Only the Board can make these decisions. And so, if everybody remembers, on April 12, the Board made a statement of support for the teachers. We had a meeting on Monday to make sure that the Board was fully informed about all of the issues so they would have all week to really think about this. And we knew since the work stoppage was not happening or was not scheduled until next week, this would be pretty much the last opportunity for everybody to be fully informed so the Board could make a decision. I applaud, first of all, the Board for taking this approach. We were one of the first districts in the state to make a proclamation of support for the Board to do so. So I commend the Board. I also commend the principals and the Administration because on a daily basis, yesterday was our last meeting, principals met with me every day at noon, and the district administration met with me every day, three times a day. That's a lot of meetings, and they don't want to eat pizza anymore, or doughnuts. By the end, I don't think anybody was eating the doughnuts. But we were committed from April 12 forward to make sure that we were fully informed. The principals gave us two criteria. The principal said, "We should be fully informed and everybody should be involved in this decision." At this point, we've done polls, we've involved parents. We have parent meetings scheduled for tonight, in fact, that will still be held at each side at 6 o'clock. So at this point, the Board and I feel like we've done as much as we can. In addition to that, the Board committed and has kept their commitment that we will make sure that we know the will of our staff before we make decisions. We did that earlier in the week, and we did that today. And it obviously was very short notice because the legislation was passed last night. One of the problems that we have, the poll from staff indicated right under 80% would like to continue the work stoppage. We hear that loud and clear, and that is part, we wanted that information as a Board and Administration before we made this decision. Other feedback we've been getting, and I'm going to ask Dr. Polk to concur this with the Board President's permission, has been that one of the things we've heard from staff, I've had emails. If you've had a chance to check your email, Board members, you've had the same feedback, I bet. And I know Dr. Polk has had this feedback. One of the things that's come up is we've only had a few hours since this was passed last night. Nobody really seems to understand all of the components of the legislation that was passed by the Senate. Indeed, there's even one funding component that has not been addressed that will be addressed today, $48 million hotel motel tax. I was at the Capitol yesterday, didn't even expect them to pass anything yesterday, and thankful they did. If, on the surface, if this legislation actually turns out to be what it looks like, I think it's going to be a great piece of legislation. It addresses teacher pay, it addresses support staff pay. But what I hear from teachers and I hear from Board members, we don't know yet. The Governor will not be signing this till this afternoon. You're off the hook, Lynn. I got, Lynn was supposed to find that out. But the Governor's aide has texted me, I'm on her committee. They are not signing until after this board meeting. So therefore, at this moment, nobody has any clarity about this. And so therefore, based on the information that we have received through the poll, through parent emails, through feedback from staff, everybody at this moment is just, we don't know yet. We don't have clarity. And if you go back to those two criteria that the principals gave us from the beginning, we want to make sure everybody's fully involved and fully informed. At this point, we still haven't involved our parents, that will be tonight. So that's the situation at the moment. We, I don't think, and I can't, I'm not going to speak for the Board in this situation, I don't think any of us can say, "We understand that there aren't any gimmicks in this legislation." We can't say that there aren't any issues that are going to bite us. But at the moment, and we shared this with staff today, one of the questions was about this, was would everybody in LPS, this is certified staff, I'll address support staff in just a minute. Certified staff, will certified staff receive a raise on top of the LPS existing salary scale? Yes, I believe that's even one of the caveats in the legislation. The raise has to be added on top. That's our intention. That is my full intention. That means if, on the first scale, and I should have brought some reading glasses, it's like $5,001 on the state. As the state salary scale is raised by $5,001, our salary scale would be raised by $5,001. The other question I get, what about people who are at 26, 29, 40 years? We have people in this room who have 44, 45 years of experience. It will be just like the current salary scale. Whatever's added to the end of the scale will be added to everybody. So those of you with 40 years of experience, 30 years of experience, we have a new updated one that goes through 29. I believe it's going to be on our website. Everything we've done so far, every poll, every result, has been on the website. The Board is committed to be transparent about this. Unfortunately, sometimes people confuse transparency with hurrying up and doing it on our schedule. The Board has been very diligent to be responsible about this. But at the moment, the legislation looks like everybody gets this. It looks like everything's funded, and it looks like everything's correct. But we're in the same place as the teachers right now. derails the whole thing. That puts us in a bad spot. The support staff salary issues, there is funding in there for support staff salary, but nobody at the moment understands exactly how that's going to work. I know that support staff salary people are very concerned about that as well. So therefore, we have legislation that's passed the House and the Senate. We, I think at this moment, they've reconciled between the two, but the Governor has not yet signed it. Therefore, we don't have any clarity. That is what we've heard from staff, that's what I've heard from Board members, that's how I feel myself. We don't know all the details. Now, I'd like to, for a second, to make sure that the Board doesn't have any questions for me, or any concerns, or how does that description, Board members, in addition to your comments concerning, describe what you've been hearing and what you've been feeling?
I just want to clarify. You're saying, the point you're making is that we don't know if the walkout's going to happen based on, we don't have enough information yet to know if this bill is going to be acceptable to teachers and parents and everybody in the community in order to prevent the walkout to begin with, and so that's what you're saying, we don't have enough information on yet, right?
Right, the people I'm hearing, I've heard feedback, and Dr. Polk, you confirmed this with the Board President's permission, that you have heard from principals that said their staff, some staff have actually voted no, or yes, walk out, because they just didn't know. And there's kind of a, I think it would be a fair statement, Dr. Polk, to say, and I'll let you speak, I promise, there's a little bit of distrust of the legislative process in Oklahoma. Okay?
And I do, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak, Ms. Denny Polk, and Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services. Most importantly, because we tried to get some information out quickly, we left out the bottom, the higher 25, and so people didn't understand. They thought that there were going to be people making more money than that. Caused a little more confusion than have probably not sent it all out. And with us trying to get the input of everyone and doing the poll, we may have caused some additional confusion. But I like the poll, and that we've tried, and I want to be thankful and say thank you to the principals, so do not hesitate and call and say, "Hey, my staff are saying something different they don't understand." And I share with Dr. Deegan, I've got to make that point clear. People may have voted one way, but now that they've had the time to process it, that's not the way that we intended. And I promise you, if we all had just a little more time to digest exactly what has happened within the last few hours, we can come back with a rational decision. And so, I plead just in regards of giving us this opportunity to process what has happened.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question, Ms. Jester?
You did, yeah.
Because I know that sometimes I jump to conclusions on the answer before I hear the full question.
Yes, you do. So we're just going to continue to make sure that we're hearing from the teachers on their desire to, and parents and every community, and everybody on the desire of this.
And I got to, again, commend the Board and administration, despite intense pressure to come with a knee-jerk decision on every day of this since it even started popping up, we have been very deliberate. We're going to make the decision when we know the information and when we have to make the decision that we can make in the best interest of everybody. We're operating on that same assumption today. We still have information that's yet to be determined.
I'd just make a comment, and kind of an informal question, but it appears that the OEA is calling for a one-day knock, walkout at this point. They've not stated any, any further definitively, which is April 2nd, which happens to be a day where we're not in school. So it appears we're going to honor that walkout. And so, you know, I think it's really prudent for us to be able to take a poll and make a decision about school closure next week, Monday, so I think that's all we can do. And I also would like to say, you may have more to say, but these four items that, or six items that we are going to vote on are going to be prefaced with some guidance by the superintendent, and we're going to share that as well, so that everyone will know, while we're giving Dr. Deegan the authority to take these actions as they're needed in the time fashion that they're needed, we're also going to have stipulations and directives from the Board as to certain conditions. And it may be too soon to talk about that, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure all the Board members have their concerns and questions.
When you just mentioned Monday, I just wanted to make sure, you're not saying we're voting on Monday because we're closed anyway, it's a holiday, right? So we're done, we're, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think I have a provision based on feedback from the Board President and Board members that will address how to make that happen. And I've talked to Ms. Cudd as well, Arlene Cudd Peel, and she has indicated that the plan is satisfactory to her, since the OEA is the call-out, is the one persisting on this, because of, again, I think the OEA has a lack of understanding at the moment, too. Even their plans have evolved this morning from full walkout no matter what, to maybe, it could be a day of celebration once we have these answers, questions answered, so.
And my deal, I know we're going to vote on these one at, one at a time, so are we going to vote on them, then put in, and then go ahead and say the guidelines that we've added to each one as we vote on it?
Do you want to do that?
I would rather do that.
What I would, what I would recommend, is the reason I asked the Board President to read all of them for everybody, is so that this conversation is about all four of them, and that when I read the guidelines that the Board, that the Board is going to recommend for me, or I've recommended the Board recommend for me, however that works, that it's before you take action on any of the four items. So the Board will be, as it was, the Board will be given the ability to deal with this, but the Board will be strongly saying, "Do this, and do this, and do this." They want it within a certain amount, a certain parameter. And I think that's, that's the Board's problem. That's the Board's role. Thank you all for giving me some guardrails. I'll run off the cliff. Any other questions or comments from Board members? Now, before I ask, we move it further, I do want to acknowledge, because of time and lunch and everything else, I don't know if the Board President had claimed to acknowledge any, but I want to let the Board know that I have certain people in the room. First of all, I won't be having a chance to let you speak, only the Board President can authorize you speak, but I would like to know, principals in the room, would you please stand? These men and women have worked their fingers to the bone over the last two weeks. They're tired of dealing with this in one hand, but they're not going to give up until, thank you all, thank you very much. They're as tired, or more tired than we are, but they're not going to give up until this is seen through to a resolution. In addition to that, I've invited Ms. Arlene Cudd with Peel, she's our OEA rep for the district. Carol Thurman, I think I see Carol Thurman, Carol Thurman? She is our representative for Professional Oklahoma Educators Association. We have two associations, but we have negotiate, no unit that negotiates on behalf of either support staff or, so they are spokespeople. In addition to that, I have our Lawton Public Schools PTA President, Mr. Aaron Brinker. And Dr. Polk saved me, have I failed to recognize any other? School organization people, okay. There are a lot of other people that I appreciate seeing you here, but I want to make sure. I invited these people specifically in case the Board had any questions. Thank you for being here and being available. If, at this moment, unless the Board calls on you, it looks like, we're just glad to have you here in case we needed you. We're working on a timed schedule as well, and so we wanted to make sure everybody was available. We've had several principals that I know Dr. Polk has spoken with on different levels, also, we wanted to make sure that we had some people as resources. If the Board doesn't have any more questions, what I'd like to recommend is that I read the guidelines.
Yes, good.
And that the Board take action.
Sounds good, okay.
Here's what, here's what I recommend the Board do, based on the guidelines and feedback you've given me. Board of Education, I recommend the Board of Education adopts all four options, motions on the agenda as written with the following statement and directions to the Superintendent. Because of an extremely short timeframe between the vote last night and our decision today, we cannot be confident that staff and parents fully understand the implication of the legislation at this time. In fact, as Board members and administrators, we cannot be confident of the implications. It appears that teachers will receive a substantial pay increase for all LPS teachers at all levels on top of the current salary scale. And funding seems to be included for support staff, but many educators have concerns about details that no one has yet been able to clarify. In addition to this, the Governor has not yet signed the legislation. We have heard from staff, and they have indicated a desire to walk out, but we have also heard from staff and principals that they do not have enough information at the moment, yet. We need to also ensure that parents are heard from and understand the issues. And parents will have an opportunity to voice their opinions at site meetings across the district at 6:00 tonight in every Lawton Public Schools school. We therefore will act on these agenda items with the following guidelines of the Superintendent. First, continue advocacy groups on Monday and every day next week, as long as enough staff are available to fill a bus or buses. We are already closed on April 2nd, so we will rely on Peel to arrange this and coordinate it. Two, due to the circumstances, we do not recommend a declaration of closure, long-term declaration of closure, until everyone understands the legislation. Therefore, this should be handled on a day-by-day basis. Let me pause there. I did talk to Ms. Cudd, and under the circumstances with the lack of clarity, a day-by-day basis is the best option at the moment. That will give staff an opportunity to be fully informed and to hear from parents tonight at 6:00 PM. A poll will be conducted from noon to 5:00 PM on April 2nd. The results and the Superintendent's decision will be shared by 6:00 PM that night. We are out of school that day, so people, meaning staff, will need to check their email from home between noon and 5:00 on April 2nd. Item number three, allow extracurricular activities and professional development activities at all sites district-wide. Principals will be responsible for ensuring that the appropriate staff are in place, policy is followed, and that student safety is ensured. Number four, allow 12-month staff to report before their pay would be impacted by any work stoppage. The Superintendent will communicate with those staff members. It is redundant, because that's what the motion says, just wanted to make sure it was clear. And number five, ensure that all feeding sites are open. Final statement is, from the beginning, the principals have asked that we proceed based on two criteria, one, that everybody is involved, and two, everybody is fully informed. This ensures that both happen before a decision is made. We will post information on the LPS website as we receive it throughout the weekend. Also in addition to that, because we do not have clarity yet, because staff members may decide to continue this all next week, I'm going to recommend that the Board reschedule Tuesday's board meeting, April 3rd board meeting, until we know when it can be held. And I will confer with the Board President. Any questions from Board members, or additions regarding that statement?
Just one point of clarification, because it's a hot button topic, is on extracurriculars, so we are saying extracurriculars can occur, as long as they can occur safely like they would have, as if we were in session.
And again, I want to reinforce that staff members have, that is a staff member and a principal decision. If, we still have to have all the safety measures, we have to have care and athletic prevention, we still have to have appropriate transportation, just as we would at any other time.
So that we'll be allowed to use our buses?
Yes, absolutely, everything, facilities, practices, that is now up to the principals, if a work stoppage occurs, if a work stoppage occurs.
And if, so if a work stoppage occurs, and we hope it doesn't, but if it does occur, and the extracurriculars, that's going to be everybody, because I know there's a lot of districts that are doing like just varsity, or just unscheduled games, just high school. We're not putting a limitation, we're allowing everybody to continue their extracurriculars.
And in addition to that, we have certain professional development activities that have been scheduled, we have certain groups, we have librarians, for example, that are going on a trip. Those things can continue. The key issue is, however, that the principals make that decision for your site, elementary sites everywhere, if you have an activity, an extracurricular activity, the principals will make that decision based on policy, the available appropriate staff, and that all safety measures are in place, just as we would any else. If for some reason the principal can't ensure those things, then the principal has to make that decision. But so far, the feedback is from the secondary principals and through Mr. Dees, that they believe that most coaches and most activities would be. I cannot guarantee to anybody that any activity will happen, because there are a lot of moving parts, but we are going to leave that up to the site, athletic directors, principals, and activity directors.
Perfect. May I say one more thing on the matter?
Oh, say it.
Okay. I just want to, there was a lot of, a lot of information that's gone around this week saying that we voted against this, and a lot of people who are here are probably angry at that fact. I know we all got a lot of emails and phone calls. That was just inaccurate information. We haven't taken a vote until this moment on the subject, so this is not a rollback of a prior decision to ban extracurriculars. I don't know where the origin of that came from, but I just wanted to say that on the record, if I may.
It was just a fear.
I understand.
Well, it was a recommendation on that, that we had received, we just have not acted on it. I'm glad you pointed that out.
Right, right.
That's important for people to know.
Yes.
It was the same situation we're facing today. We did not have the information at that time.
Well, and I believe that I know Lynn does a great job of keeping the website updated, and if there are questions like that, and information that people want, the website, the goal is to keep it as informed, and she's killing it on that goal, to keep it as informed as we did in the bond process. So if you do have questions like that, like did the Board rule against all extracurriculars, that would be a great place to go every day.
And Monday night, I think it was our board meeting where the Board scheduled this meeting to make the decision, so.
But I would like to say.
Has been scheduled.
I would like to thank everybody that did email, the passion that you show for your students is commendable. I mean, if my kids were playing today, I'd be proud to have any of these coaches or parents, teachers involved, because you truly care about the kids, and you, you really showed through in your emails, and I read them all.
So if the Board is comfortable, these are my recommendations and the guidelines that I suggest that you adopt, these four statements. With my understanding, I will follow these. These are my, this is how I plan to complete these tasks as you've assigned them, so.
And we need to do these separately.
Need to do them separately, I believe.
I don't, I don't. We can probably discuss more in between the motions, but I will, I will again read the first one. Consideration action, authorize Superintendent Deegan to suspend school district-wide and take other necessary actions if the teachers and or support personnel engage in a work stoppage, and Superintendent Deegan determines that student safety is endangered by the lack of adequate staff to provide supervision of students.
Member approval, second?
Call roll, please.
Ms. Klaugelter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Can I say something, go to the next one?
Yes.
Should we, should we say along with the, with the guidelines that we have put in first? On the passage, can we say that?
I agree.
Yes, we would like to add to that motion that if the guidelines that were read by Dr. Deegan are a part of each of these.
So this will look, item number three will occur on a day-by-day basis.
Correct.
Okay, the next item is consideration and act, I'm sorry.
We do need to.
We do need to.
Oh, we, we voted, we voted, okay.
We voted, yeah, you, yeah.
You seconded it.
I seconded.
Yeah, but we, I didn't, we felt, she's getting on. I'm reading here.
Do we need to, do we need to vote on the additional? Mr. Wade?
We took the vote on the big motion, but then they added this extra.
We need to add, we need to take, vote on the additional that were added, yes.
That's what I was talking about.
Now, let me ask this question, Mr. Wade.
Can we do it at the very end?
Can, every motion will include, under the guidelines provided by, by Dr. Deegan, is that not sufficient? not sufficient for each motion? That's what they said, they want to adopt item number three under the guidelines provided by Dr. Deegan.
As long as it's clear that the, that was, that was part of the motion as stated and as voted on.
And I think that was part of the motion, correct?
It wasn't, the reason why, so we...
Should do it again.
Redo the motion.
Redo the motion.
Redo. He raised that.
That's what I was...
Who made the motion?
I did. So do we have to do it for each motion, or can we say? Each motion, okay. So, I move for approval of number three, the consideration of action to authorize Dr. Deegan to suspend school state, or district-wide, with the direction that he's been given by the board.
There you go. Second.
Who seconded?
Patty.
Patty did? Okay. Call her off.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Consideration, action, authorize Superintendent Deegan to determine whether during any employee work stoppage, the district has the staff available to continue extracurricular, co-curricular, and other after-before-school programs, and to make decisions regarding those activities accordingly, accordingly with the recommendations made, recommendations made by the board.
Motion to approve. Second?
Colerole, please.
I do. Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Consideration, action, authorize Superintendent Deegan to take the steps necessary to permit 12-month support employees who have been unable to make up the loss of workdays occurring before, because of a school closure, if due to a teacher work stoppage, to elect one of the following options. Number one, assignment of work during any closure to avoid the loss of pay for any day or days of absence. Two, to take a day of accrued leave, except that employees cannot take sick leave for this purpose. Or three, to choose a day or days of leave without pay, and then according to the recommendations made by the board, to Dr. Deegan.
Second?
Colerole, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Consideration, action regarding the authorization for feeding sites during any potential work stoppage.
Go ahead.
Do you want to add your...
Don't believe we need to on this one.
Move for approval.
Second.
Colerole, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Any board announcements?
Just one more clarification, the meeting Tuesday night, April 3rd, has been postponed.
It is possible, when is our second board meeting this month?
16.
Okay. It is possible, because the 10th and the 16th are so close, we may decide to, as a staff, to come up with a different date for both of those. Having one five days apart may be a little untenable. That way, we'll have a little time, we'll work here as a staff to work with the board president to decide when that board meeting should be.
Is it the 19th or the 16th?
I think it's the 16th, and I don't have it with me.
I have it on the 19th.
Okay, then you're, you're right.
Okay, it's a Thursday, the 19th.
That may work, then.
The 19th, I'm sorry.
The 10th and the 19th.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay. And this is all going to be published on the LPS website, or audio, or something? Okay. All right, now move for adjournment?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Colerole, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.